February, Rochelle Post Office, Rochelle School District Office, Rochelle School Website, and with W D U X, W S P T, and W S A W. All right, consider approval of agenda additions and revisions. One thing that I would like to do is to move the Assistant A D to closed session. That'll be one adjustment we would need to make. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with revisions, moving that full session item?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, James, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Melissa, there's a second. All those in favor of the agenda as made with adjustments, all those in favor say aye. If those oppose, a motion is carried. All right, public comment. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. The Board of President will establish the general operating rules once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name, address, and share with the board what topic you are speaking on to the board. We ask that you please refrain from identifying specific persons in your comments. Okay, today we have one person who wishes, one, both of them, wish to speak to us, and that is Jason and Melissa, is that Melissa Cluck? Okay, would you come up and have a seat at our chair?
I'll show you another chair.
Oh, I saw that, I.
Jason's here.
Yeah, yeah. So I get to sit down too?
Yeah, you, no, yeah, we're gonna make the stand. Yes, yes, you may sit down, Jason.
So my name is Jason Cluck, my wife Melissa Cluck and I, you needed our address, right?
Yes.
Nine five one four County Road O O Rochelle. We're, we understand you guys are discussing later on about a hockey co-op parent request, and that would be on our behalf. I'm not good at speaking publicly, so I wrote some stuff down here, so if it seems a little robotic, I apologize. We first want to thank you guys for last year joining the Pacelli Co-op Hockey Team. It allows our son to continue playing a sport that he loves without us having to have the difficult conversation of switching school districts and all that stuff, so we appreciate that. It, we also feel that with him being a part of the program, it's also helped cast a positive light on Rochelle School District. Team has participated in community events such as the Salvation Army Bell Ringing to help put together a charity hockey event that benefited a local Rochelle family that was battling a illness, and it also just strives not only to make better athletes but better teammates and community members. We're here tonight to ask for the school board's consideration with helping defer the cost of the season. All the costs of the season fall on the parents and players of that team. Some of the costs associated with this include ice time, busing officials, coaches' salary, pucks, jerseys, just to name a few. The seasonal cost for us this year, and it varies depending on the number of players and what, but for us it was six, one thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents a player. The Pacelli Co-op Hockey Team is currently made up of four school districts. Pacelli, obviously, Wisconsin Rapids Assumption, Amherst, and Rochelle. Of the four districts, Rochelle is the only one that does not help its students defer the cost of the season, and this is coming from Pacelli's A D. Pacelli and Wisconsin Rapids Assumption cover the entire cost for their players. Amherst contributes five hundred dollars per athlete. Again, we're just here asking for consideration and see if anybody has any questions for us with regards to that, so that's.
Okay. We will be discussing that later, so we'll give, somebody we'll get back to eventually with the decision.
Sounds good.
See, it wasn't that bad, was it?
No, no.
Okay, we don't fight.
Not hard.
Not hard. And I don't want to answer this, thank you. Okay, communication, district administrative report.
So just a couple of things. Obviously graduation's coming up, and it's weird that that's here already, because I remember, you know, seems like just a couple of days ago, we were like, oh, careful, you know, it's Thanksgiving break, and then it's Christmas break, and you get that little dull, that little long spell, and then it's, you know, spring break, and then it's a sprint to the finish, and here we are two days out. It's, it's truly amazing, and it sneaks up on me every year, even though I warn others about it, it's just, it's here. I do believe Shane is going to, during the secondary school principals' report, ask more questions about who's all attending and that type of stuff, so I'll leave that for then. The R E A and R E A leadership and myself have talked about negotiations, starting that during a special board meeting. I believe that the dates that were available presented by the R E A were May twenty-ninth and June third, so later on, you know, as we break and going from regular agenda into closed session, if we can take a look at our calendars and take a look at if one of those days works better, I think the way I understand it is the twenty-ninth works the best, June third would be another option potentially, but if we could lock that in and we could open up the negotiations with R E A, that would be good to get that moving. Just FYI, every year we get a report back from Meritha County Special Ed, and this year, the hearing of vision screenings that we do not pay for, but they come in and support our, our younger children, they conducted screenings on four hundred eighty-nine students, so that's quite, quite a lot of students, and some of those, you know, they come in and check, and then they come back and recheck, and it's hearing and vision, so that's, that's quite a number, and that's a great service that we have, trying to identify any hearing or seeing difficulties at an early age. The last thing they had a report on is Veragey. We had a presentation months ago from Veragey, and basically they said, hey, here's a comprehensive plan for like eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand dollars to bring our mechanicals up, up to, you know, current terms. And when Mr. Richter and myself sat down, and I think we had conversations with the board even to say, we're just adding up like UNIVENTS, we have over a million dollars in UNIVENTS to upgrade, so what does this really mean? Just like most of the other performance service contractors, they come in and kind of say, well, this is some, something that we can do for you, but if you want a full comprehensive study, then it's gonna cost, you know, X amount. Well, we asked them to come back in because we said this is not a comprehensive study, so they did come back, spent more time, probably have done at least the initial part of what that full facility study would look like, and it's, they have come back with a three-phased approach to handling our, our mechanicals. So my question for the board tonight, I'm just gonna open this up real quick, and we don't have to go through it one hundred percent, but basically they're taking a look, and we've already had a presentation, so this was the individual that came and had the big, Jason Stine, came in and had the big cardboard things and said, this is kind of what we plan to do, but really what they're, they're talking about is, is classroom air handlers. They wouldn't have cooling, but they'd be set up for cooling, so that would be in phase two to add the air conditioning or the, or the cooling aspect to the classrooms. They'd have the main air handlers, which they are talking about using the, the casing that's there and replacing basically the guts, so to speak, of that to bring that up to a more efficient status. The boilers, they would replace the boilers, and they'd also then be replacing the, the heat pumps that are in the, and really we're talking the upper elementary, middle school area in, in the back of the school here. They talked about funding and grants and whatnot, and initially they said, well, if you spend like nine hundred thousand dollars, then in twelve years you start to see the money. Well, I'm like, I don't think the board's willing to take on another nine hundred thousand dollar project after we just talked about rooftops and we're, we're not in a position to do that. So I did ask him then to take and, and take a look at the second, and this is super small, and this is where, I'm not gonna be able to blow it up, but basically, there's like a twenty-six-year buyback if we said, okay, let's, instead of taking out a loan and paying for it all upfront, let's use the energy savings and have them kind of do an ongoing buyback each year, right? So our energy savings, we pay a little bit each year as we go, and that, that's quite lengthy, and some of the product, some of the things that we're, we're talking about installing through this plan have a useful lifespan, less than that. So now we're all of a sudden, we're replacing things when we haven't even paid them off. So my question really to the board is, do we want to see the presentation from Veragey again? Do we want to pause this? Because again, we're talking a pretty hefty price tag, and I don't know that the boards, as we look forward to the upcoming year, I don't know that we're currently in a position to, to take a look at another large dollar item like this. We could definitely have Jason come in and present to us again, and we ask him more questions and, and find out more about the information and the different phases. I can also, you know, send that out to, to the board, and we can read about it ourselves with a different phase approach, but I guess I'm looking for direction to, from the board to say, do we want to hear another presentation? Do we want to table this right now? Are we interested in pursuing this? I mean, eventually we have to do something with them again, because that's the only thing that I can tell you for sure, it's just a matter of how we do that.
So my thought is, we're spending a lot of money out of luck this year. We're spending a lot of money.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got a lot of stuff going on, teachers raises, insurance, all that stuff, so my suggestion is, we just, I'd love to do this because this benefits us in the long run, but I don't think we can afford it right now, that's my thought. Table it till next year, and look at this in the near future, but not right now.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with James. I think we should have to pause on it now, because we have other issues that we need to deal with that are more important than doing that. I mean, it would be nice to be able to do this now, but I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by just keep adding more projects on top without, you know, the money of course to do.
And the other thing I don't have for the board at this time is comparable, so there's other companies that we've initially talked to about this, but it's not like we can line up the roofing contractors and have three or four or five different presentations in one night to say, this is how we're gonna counteract your mechanicals, this is how we're gonna picture. I don't have that lined up, and I think maybe if we, if we pause and we go through the school year and devise that plan, and maybe next spring, then we're, we're in maybe a better situation, we can kind of see how next year's budget's looking, and then we can bring in multiple places that we've been working with over time to say, what is your plan of attack? How can you help us satisfy this mechanical concern that we have?
I guess my only little question is, is there any stuff that is teetering on going out, which is gonna be a cost that we're not looking forward to, or is everything in decent working condition right now?
The simple answer is yes, because we have, so some of those water pumps, useful life, we, we replaced one this year, and you can't, you can't buy just the fan, or you can't buy just the pump, you gotta buy the whole assembly, right? So that's, I think Matt had a question on, on one of those expenditures, or like seven thousand or something, or five thousand for just the pump, so we replaced one already, but in, in Tom's ideal world, they would take those six or seven pumps out and put two larger ones in that could handle more, and kind of reconfigure that, so we don't have, obviously each piece would be more expensive, but overall we wouldn't have so much maintenance to do, but the probability, you know, those are, and I don't know the exact age, but let's say that, you know, that it's a fifteen-year life, we're already in year twenty. You know, we have some air handlers that, the casings are from the sixties, but we've constantly upgraded the inside, and so the useful life on, on some of those, you know, were beyond four or five years. We have water heaters in the high school area, one is completely broken, the other one leaks periodically, so eventually it's not just a two hundred dollar residential water heater that you're gonna put in either, you know? So eventually, like, right now with our current hot water situation in high school, if we had a tornado in the community, and if we were then occupied as kind of a disaster relief center, we would struggle to provide hot showers for community members that were displaced because of destruction to homes.
This was my thought last night. I didn't know that, I said it out loud, I'm like, well, I don't turn it.
Now, specifically to those where, where we have a plan for next year for the specific water heaters, but when it comes to some of the other areas, we, we don't have, we, we know it's an issue, and we're trying to string along until we can get a comprehensive plan now. To the question that was asked a couple of months ago, it seems like there was a couple of years ago that Ken Street came into the school district and did one of those initial studies, but again, what I'm learning from these performance service companies is that they'll come in and they'll talk with your building and grounds people, they'll talk with your administrators, and they're like, oh yeah, we need to upgrade our fire system, look at this, they don't even, oh, fire system is one of the things we should do, and they take your responses to their questions, and then they'll go out and bid it, and that's exactly what the Ken Street did, they, they talked with our local people, they came up with the four main things that they heard from multiple sources, to be fire doors, to be, I have the list out, rooftops, and then there was the UNIVENTS, and then there was something else, so two of those four we've already addressed, or we are addressing this year. So it's just one of those things, and, and every company's gonna do that, and I think that's an issue with Veragey Performance Services, some of these other companies that we've talked with, they're like, oh, we'll come in and, and I hate to say low-hanging fruit, but they, like, oh, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, because they listen to us God, and they hear the same thing from multiple sources, and they're like, oh, fire doors is a problem here, we could do fire doors for X amount of money, and then that's something you should focus on, that's one of the, the red light items, if you go red, yellow, green, green's good to go, yellows, a few years out, and red's like dire, when they hear that from local sources, like, oh, that's a red light item. So there's multiple companies that do that, and then the idea from the companies is that we could do this, but really what we should do is a full comprehensive study for ten to twenty thousand dollars, and then we'll go and say, oh, this U bolt needs replaced in seven years, and this thing has to be replaced in five years, and this thing is good for the next ten, and that's where they really get into that comprehensive nuts and bolts of every aspect, to include furniture, carpeting, plumbing, every aspect of the building. That has not been done for the district, and I don't know if that's something that we'd want to do, we might have to do that if we want to go forward with any performance services company that is going to do something like this, which Veragey has already started that process, because we said, hey, this initial plan is not necessarily all-encompassing, so now they've presented a three-phase all-encompassing plan, which the first phase is gonna be, would be at this point in dollars roughly that one thousand dollar approach, whether you take a loan and pay it all at once, or you pay back, you know, a little at a time, it still takes quite a long time to, to be net, net even, net neutral.
I think one of the things we have to think of is, if it costs us nine hundred thousand right now, wait next year, or two years from now, it's might be one point three million, right? It could very easily go up, could double, anything from now until then. Very, very good chance it's not gonna go down in price, that's for sure, you know? It's something we should probably consider too, for those reasons, and consumables are all up, what, thirty percent? True, but.
Budget, budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Right, right, love to do it.
And that concludes my report, you know, hopefully you had a chance to look at this, if not, I'd recommend that you go head back and take a look at the Veragey presentation, if you have any questions, Val needs to let me know. Jason is always on call and ready to answer any questions from his standpoint too, and if there's ever a point that we want to get him back to have, okay, let's hear straight from the company source, he's willing to do that.
I think we'll just put it on hold, but if, after you guys research everything and you read it, if you have more questions, like Dennis know, or if we feel that we need to go forward with that, then add a different date we can, but.
Well, what I'll do is I'll work with Tom to identify and reconnect with the other companies, and ask them if they could have, without doing the full comprehensive study to present their course of action, and have multiple, multiple presenters potentially come in next spring.
All right, elementary school principal department, Mrs. Klein.
Hi, y'all.
Hi.
Um, typically, this is the month where I tell you about summer school. So we ended summer school registration on May tenth. We have seventy-seven students this year, which is about twelve more students than last year, so we're looking at a bigger summer school, eleven more students. I did have one parent contact me today saying she doesn't think her kid is gonna go, but then I had a parent contact me today and say, hey, we missed registration, so while it's closed, if there are parents who reach out, I would certainly entertain enrolling more students if we have room. Currently at grades one and two, we, we don't have, grades one and two are at like twenty-eight kids signed up for that, which is much bigger than our typical class size, so we'll have an assistant with them. We are using the second year of the out-of-school summer grant that we wrote in conjunction with Boys and Girls Club of Orange County, so we're providing transportation, this is the second year, and the final year of the grant, there isn't another grant out currently, so this is the last opportunity for transportation unless the district were to decide to pick up the transportation costs in the future. We do have thirty kids using transportation over the summer. Some are going home at the eleven o'clock and fifteen-ish time, some will be going home after Boys and Girls Club. We, Todd and I are looking at the numbers, looking at the use of a bus and a van, or two vans, depending, just to get the, you know, to keep our costs as low as we possibly can, so if we can do vans, we're gonna do vans, because vans are just cheaper for us to run than buses. We have three parent professionals for summer, some will work with dedicated students, some will work with the grade level, for example, grades one and two being such a large group, they are going to stick with, with those kiddos this year with a parent professional. You guys had already determined compensation is thirty dollars an hour for teachers, eighteen dollars an hour for parent professionals, teachers get three hours of contact time and one hour of prep time a day. This year we're trying something different. Rather than having a teacher stay with each group for the full three hours, we're going to have them teach their content area, their county specialty. So Ms. Betro will be teaching all four grade levels, essentially seven grade levels, but all four groups. Reading, Mrs. McDonald will be teaching them all math, Mrs. Aquig for first session will be teaching them art, Mr. Smith for second session is doing STEM and engineering. We had a teacher just let me know that she isn't able to do summer school, so I'm currently looking for someone two days a week to go opposite Ms. Schenzel, who will go two days a week, and Ms. Schenzel will do nutrition. Trying to find someone, so trying to find someone. Are there questions about summer school? Any other questions? We will still have band, which is band lessons. She doesn't follow the same summer school schedule she does three or four weeks, three days a week, and kind of fills the entire day. We will still have driver's ed, that runs again different hours, because they have to have a certain amount of hours, and they run Monday through Friday, and then I believe Mr. Larson will be talking about summer school? Okay, there will be some high school summer school credit recovery as well. Any questions on summer? Any questions at all for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Miss Klein? No?
Awesome.
We're off the book today, I guess.
Got the easy button, where was my hat? I like it, I got the easy button.
I should have brought my hand. All right, secondary, Mr. Larson.
First of all, the first one, Play Sixty update, tonight, McKenna Losinski, she's our secondary piano teacher, she's here, and I'm glad she's here to present it, because actually she's taken this Play Sixty group, she's the advisor for it, she's, she's really grown it, so I wanted, I'm glad she gets the opportunity to share a pretty unique award, and maybe explain a little bit about what Play Sixty is.
Yeah, so Play Sixty kind of links up with the NFL and encourages sixty minutes of activity every single day. It is a pretty popular club, and we work with the Wisconsin dairy farmers, they fund t-shirts and fun stuff like that. They only allow up to twenty kids to be in the club, so there actually is a cutoff if they're not in in time and we get to twenty. This year they did something cool, these are just screenshots of the video they played for us where it showed that we were the winner. We competed in a nationwide contest for being physically fit, getting points, they could sync, they came up with a Play Sixty app that you could sync to your Apple Watch, to your phone, where you could enter how many minutes you are active per day, and that would keep track, and if you played different like fun games that they had on it and made your points like times four, times five, et cetera, a bunch of ways you could get bonus booster points. There was one winner for every state, so we're in Wisconsin, and whether they wanted to pick the Packers or not, I told them we're playing for the Packers, so we were, the Packers represented us, we won statewide, so we got a thousand dollar grant, and then they were offering an extra thousand dollar grant for this nationwide, nationally, which school competed the most and earned enough points by whether it was actually being active or playing games on the app, and we were the winner of that, so we received another thousand dollars. So we have a two thousand dollar grant coming directly from the Green Bay Packers that has to be used on physical education equipment, so that was a cool, like, livestream they had, and I got a reaction of the kids watching Rochelle's name pop up, and it was pretty cool. So that's just a little bit about that at work.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second, we have E for E update, so that's Education for Employment, and for that, I'm gonna pass it over to Jillian Gage, our elementary guidance counselor, she's part of our A C P team, our academic and career planning team that came up with this.
So we have to, we have to update you every year on this. You actually opened up this slideshow, yes. And so I, I make it short and sweet. So, did you skip this slide? This is the video, I don't think you need to watch the video, do we?
Do we have a chance to watch that? Do we know how long it is?
About three minutes, three, four minutes.
And they should, you shared this video with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's all right.
So, next slide.
Hey, there we go, sorry.
So, these are our employment projections, and that's where we believe that our, why that just gonna be going, excuse me, just next slide. So our, in our local area, these are the places where, or the local career pathways where the, the, or that we funnel kids into, so agriculture, food, natural resources, business management, administration, hospitality, tourism, manufacturing. And then this is what we did this year for each of the different schools. Five.
Just pause real quick so they can see the, hold on. Good?
Yeah.
These are the partnerships that we have outside of the school.
Perfect.
Yeah. Use Zello for our academic career planning software, this can be used grade six through Software that runs kind of, it's a really easy interface, it's simple and provided by the state. Next slide. We really wanted to get parent engagement on, so this year in Little People Land, third through sixth grade, students provide, we got their parents talking to them about their careers, and with a little activity that we'll talk about later, setting all the deer, taking pictures with the deer. It was seventh and ninth grade orientation, sixth, ninth, and eleventh grade conferencing, another parent engagement, financial aid night, ninth grade registration meetings, pre-K through twelve parent teacher conferences we talked about, academic and career planning, and then on our, on our Facebook page.
Can I ask you about Zello? Is that the one that the seniors use this year to figure out their career for the future? Who said?
This one.
Okay, 'cause that's the one that I heard a lot of negative comments from the students, they didn't feel that it helped them at all, 'cause they came up with, some of their, their goals were like to become a janitor, cleaning, whatever, and they just didn't, that's why I was just wondering, how long have we been using that? Or I mean, is this just their opinion, or is it?
We've been using it for quite some time, and a lot of neighboring districts use it as well, and it starts off with a We've been using it for quite some time. A lot of neighboring districts use it as well. And it starts off with an interesting inventory. And there's two components to it. Number one, how much you put into the questions that they're asking you. And then number two, what outfit do you get, right? And for some students, it meshes. I know my my kid uses it in Whitberg and it came up with his interest and that's something that he's passionate about. That's something he wants to learn. I have talked to students that it puts stuff in and it comes up with something totally random, like you're mentioning, right? For some people, it works. For others, not so much.
I mean, it was just, that was a comment that I got a lot from the seniors that I did interview, that that was there. They didn't feel it was beneficial to them.
So it used to be called Career Cruising and we've used it here since before I got here as Career Cruising. The company rebranded it under the name of Zello the year before I got here in the eighteen, nineteenth school year. It's still the same product, but they changed the name of it and they changed some of the functionalities in it. So it's been around here for quite some time. But again, you know, like we kind of said just back here is it's what kids put into it, right? Like quality answers in, hopefully you get quality answers out. If you're just clicking because I have to do this, you might get underwater basket weaving as the
But yeah, I mean, I was just curious. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't use it. I just was wondering.
And I have had kids that said that they take it serious and the, the jobs that were listed for them, they don't see themselves going that road at all. But the, the program itself is kind of neat because then you click on those occupations and they'll give you a, I think, five, ten year outlook kind of thing, right? You guys are kind of helping with some of that stuff too, but it gives you outlook like
training needed.
Yep, opportunities in organizations, in high school, middle school. Eight graders, we use it for future ready. And then our big thing is if it comes up with a crazy answer for us, why did it? Was it because we didn't put effort into it? But if we did and it came up with a wild answer, then like, why don't we want to do that career? Why is that career outlandish to us?
I wasn't sure if you guys were aware of their frustration with it, so I just wanted to bring that. Okay, nevermind. Just to go with me. But it's just something that I found that came up. Okay, thank you.
So our short-term goals for maybe next year or the year after, we want to invite a representative from the Portage County Business Council to present and collaborate at one of our ACP meetings. ACP resources will be provided with families throughout the school year. Students will share ACP progress with parents and guardians through the profile sharing on Zello. Anything to get from our career ready. We want to survey the staff on ACP activities and implementation in the fall. And then continue to invite representatives from the following institutions, so mid-state, North Central Technical College, U S P, Portage County Business Council, and Fox Valley. Our long-term goals, all parents will have a conversation with their students regarding ACP, their ACP plan in sixth, ninth, and eleventh grade. Student-led parent meetings will be used for sixth and eleventh grade students. One hundred percent of the staff will feel competent, more comfortable developing ACP activities. And local employers, post-secondary institutions, the workforce development will participate annually in reviewing and revisiting the district's PI twenty-six plan. And then we continue our Russian career fair. Really enjoyed that. And then these are a few of our highlights. The deer interns I sent home at the beginning of the of the year in November, orange slip because I thought, oh, it's deer hunting season, so orange. Yeah, I had the parents sign the bottom and then I call each parent. And then if they picked up, I sent the deer home with them, stuffed deer. And then the parents were supposed to take the deer to work with them. Take pictures of the deer. And then write a little blurb about their jobs. And I can tell you that they had more fun with that. The career fair, the senior interviews, and then high schools presenting their career choices to elementary school students. So that gave them mentor ability and then it gave the students, the elementary students.
And later on the agenda, it's an actual item that you guys would have to approve. It's a requirement for PI twenty-six that we have education for employment and this is one aspect of it. With the career fair, I know that Catherine Lampy and Gillian and Colton and Lynn and Jade and Chad, they did a whole bunch of work on that. We had twenty-some employers and we're looking at growing that next year to a full-day event inviting other schools, so. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Very thorough. Thank you. Thanks for answering my question on Zoom. All right, anything else, Mr. Larson?
Fundraising schedule. So this is something that we just like to share with the board, a list of the different events that we have planned for this next school year. We basically take a look at everything that organizations submit and then try to make sure that these things are not doubling up or I guess lining up really closely. We have bake sales one week for one organization and a bake sale for another organization. So they're spread out and there's as much equal opportunity for teams to do stuff, organizations to do stuff, so. The next one is due to me, but I hear that it's been a racial tradition for quite some time. Ms. Kowalski asked to get a field trip approved for next November. And she really needs it approved sooner rather than later. I guess every couple of years they go down to Chicago and they do a it's like a medieval tournament event and then they stop at Fort Atkinson and they have a musical on, America on Thirty Fourth Street. They've been doing this for, I don't know, twenty, really, quite a while. But anyways, it's a pretty expensive trip. It gets to be in the thousands of dollars. I believe the, she said some years it's ten thousand dollars. What ends up happening is the school actually pays for it first. They get a school credit card and then the students through their fundraising and events, they end up reimbursing the school one hundred percent of the cost. But it takes her, she said, to get tickets and hotels and travel. She needs to start doing that. So this is an actual item later on the agenda as well. Then the last thing, do you have any questions for me on that? And the last thing, graduation. We're, we're close to being done with everything except for planning board members at graduation. What I mean by that is on the stage, we typically have board members that help out. I know one thing you do is you certify that all these students that have both received diplomas are likely to do that last year. You certify that they've all met all the requirements. And then last year, I think at least you helped out in the past. We just need to know who is going to be on stage. I just need to know from my plan, whatever you guys decide, who's up there. So we can figure that out.
Well, I'll be there and Alyssa, you'll be there. James, and you?
I think Chris should be. His, he's graduating. I think it'd be nice if him.
You want me to be up? Definitely if there's room.
Whatever you guys decide.
Why don't you three do it? I mean, that's all you want, a free, right?
I just, because I'm going to thank all board members and I'm going to say specifically, and then the individuals that are helping out. I just need to know how many chairs we need up there and who I should specifically be mentioning.
We can talk about it, but I'm sure these, these three.
Thank you.
Because if we lose it up there, you go. Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Larson?
That's it unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Larson? All right, agenda.
Right, consent agenda, as we implemented at the beginning of this calendar year. Again, we go through the same five categories, the contracts, resignations, retirements, board-approved field trips, gifts and requests, and the meeting minutes from the previous regular board meeting and any special board meeting that might have occurred. Under contracts, this, this month, we have the summer, summer staff, summer help staff. Basically, this is a list from Tom. These are the people that he is recommending for summer, summer assistance and summer help. There are a couple of new people that were not on the list from last year and what he did is basically said there was new applicants this year, but the people that applied last year, that's, that applied again this year, they had first dibs to get onto the list because they had already applied last year and for whatever reason weren't selected or couldn't get on because of work schedules. And again, he wanted me to remind everybody that, you know, it could be where one student can work Monday and Wednesday and the other student can work the Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So he's trying to blend them together and also, you know, if the family takes a trip, then that person's gone. And so the other summer help, you know, kind of covers for each other in that regard. So that would be on as far as the hires. We do have a food service director recommendation. A couple of years ago, our food service director in the beginning of the school year left to go to a different school district. And at that point, we kind of, to my knowledge, or to my, to how it's been explained, is we basically tried to promote from within. The next year, we increased two positions to try to carry on and it, it really drove our productivity down. So where we used to be producing over thirty meals per hour, it went down to under twenty meals per hour. This year, knowing that knowing that another company or another school district was also kind of in the same position, Bowler and us entered into a mutual agreement where they hired a food service director and then we signed a sixty-six oh three agreement with them, a governmental agreement, to share those services, to which we paid forty and they paid sixty. That person resigned in February, shortly after we had hired Teresa as our food service lead because it came to our attention that with our food service director between two places, we still needed somebody here full-time every day to be the go-to person to answer those routine questions because there wasn't a quote-unquote leader, if you would, by title in, in the department. So we did that. Now that that, that food service director and the agreement with Bowler is over, we're recommending to promote our lead to our food service director. She is excited. She has took spring break and spent a couple of days in Almond because she's from the southern part of, of, well, she's from the almond area south of, of us, has some friends in their school district and went into the food service area to understand how did they do things? How can we, how do I get more training in DPI? And how do I take over some of the financials? Because eventually the idea is that we will have a food service director that will be and handle all facets of food service. Because as it's been in the past, Mary's done a little bit, Rachel's done a little bit, our food service people have done a little bit, Tom's done a little bit. Everybody's kind of picked up to try to piecemeal this together. And it, it seems like we, we now have a person that's committed, dedicated, and willing to learn that role. So we're recommending that we approve the food service director contract. Also, we have a, a full-time substitute that has already interviewed with us. During our elementary interviews, there were multiple, multiple teachers that were highly rated. Tanya Kowalski came to us and was, was there, but there was two others that we selected for the full-time positions. When I reached out to her, let her know that she didn't receive one of the, the elementary positions, I talked to her about the full-time substitute status, trying to get that get that lined up for next year because as the board may remember, Bethany Betro is serving in that and now she has taken over her own classroom. I talked with Grace Kempke, our, our loved, our part-time substitute that has come in at semester and she's looking for her own classroom as well. So she was not interested in continuing with, with the full-time sub. And so we offered it to Tanya Kowalski and she goes, yeah, I'd love to do that. That'd be great. That's right up my alley. So we're recommending the approval of that full-time sub for next year. So we, and there's no guarantee that she's not going to find her own classroom and then we'll circle back and, and post that full-time sub again. But right now, she seemed like she was pretty excited about that. So hopefully, hopefully she's able to continue and she's from the point area, so it's local and pretty close. And that would help us out a lot because, and we thank the board for allowing us to do that because subs are harder and harder to find. So if we have a full-time sub to have that person here, we can just, okay, we need you to go here and go here. Mary, Shane, how many times have we reworked schedules in the past two, three months? Many or not.
Helps having a full-time sub.
Even with two full-time subs.
We're still, still navigating, negotiating and having them here for half-day and pull them here for hour, pull them here for the, it's, it does help us a lot.
We've had questions on fourth through sixth grade field day and why we're choosing Friday. Because I, I literally have no subs. I posted it on Facebook. The question was asked on Facebook, right? Like, we have no subs for Thursday, so I can't pull two teachers out of the classroom to run an event when we're, we're here to learn and that's what we're doing, so.
The second category, resignations, retirements. Initially, I sent the board packet last week and we didn't have anybody listed here. As rumored and as I kind of reported to the board before, now I've got, received official notification from Mr. Luke Kilkers that he will not be returning as middle school football coach. So that's the resignation that's there. And then we have the board-approved field trip that Mr. Larson had talked about for the band trip as presented before. There's no gifts or requests at this time to, to list. And then we have our meeting minutes from the regular board meeting and the special board meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to, or does anybody have any questions about anything that's on our consented agenda? If not, I would need a motion to approve the consented agenda.
Did he just resign from middle school football? Luke?
Yeah, so I always attach for the board the, the email and it's simply, you know, to confirm a recent conversation, I will not be returning as middle school, middle school football team. So that's all he states. As far as all other positions of coaching that he does, I, to me, as far as I know, he's going to continue in those, in those areas.
Do I have a motion? Oh, motion. Okay, Chris? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Matt, there's a second. All those in favor of approving the consented agenda, say aye. Those opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? No. Okay. Motion carried. All right, approval of bills and financial statements. We got check summaries, revenue summary, revenue expense details, revenue expense summary. Chris, did you receive any questions from anybody?
Not this one.
Okay. Does anybody have anything that they didn't, which I'm just sending? All right, then I will need a motion to approve the bills with financial statements. Okay, Matt, is there a second? Okay, I'll shoot a second. All right, all those in favor of approving the bills with financial statements, say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carried. Old business, we have one.
It's rare.
That's rare. That's rare. New business, though. Consider summer school training provider, Michael Dunn.
So I've asked Mike to be here tonight. There's a couple of options because as we held the, the football informational listening session, there was a, a general theme that from, from the people in, in the auditorium, that there was a general theme that it would be great if our kids could become bigger, faster, stronger and have a program and be committed to lifting and, and getting more flexible and improving their, their explosiveness and endurance and strength and, and all the good things. So Mike and Jordan have been kind of talking with multiple companies to do so. Initially, last week when I sent out the packet, I had included things that Mike and I were under the understanding and I that has changed a little bit because initially we had stated or we thought that Athletic, Athletes University was going to have somebody on-site the entire time. We've learned now that that's not the case, so we really have two programs that, that was kind of the difference maker at that time, but I'm going to let Mike kind of talk about the two options and, and what he sees and then also talk about a potential recommendation. And let me know if you want me to open up.
Yeah.
Video or anything.
Well, just preface it by saying that many of the schools of our size have these athletic fitness programs. And I think for us to continue to compete at a level that will allow us to be proud of our programs. um we're going to have to take that step to to um go out and get something like this. So um the first, the uh the school, the uh Booster Club had reached out to Charlie Worley, who is the um, he's got a business of fitness, uh strength, fitness, training business. And he's also the strength trainer for um Pacelli High School. And he did a presentation, and they really liked his presentation, and I was there, and it was a very good presentation. And he's very well-regarded, and he's very well-credentialed. Um and uh and they decided to put fourteen hundred dollars uh towards him or towards. I said that we were looking at another one as well, so they just said, well, we'll put the fourteen hundred dollars to, you know, obtain uh the services of a of a uh a fitness strength coordinator. So the other, so we toured and found another, or we had been searching for one, and one that would uh work with us, and that was uh Athletes University. And um they uh put out a presentation here a couple of Saturdays ago, and they did a mock workup with some of our athletes and parents and uh coaches. Some coaches were there to uh to see what was available. And we liked what we saw, and they presented their model. And their model has to do with uh tying it into summer school so that the DPI or the standard Wisconsin ends up paying for it based on the number of students you have and the number of minutes. So their flat rate fee would be like fifty-four hundred, but when you tie it into a summer school model, um all those minutes that the kids are in training count for time uh for summer school, and we're reimbursed for that. So that's their, you know, that's their pitch. Um they also are, I think we'll watch some of the video here. Uh they also have uh many other things that make them um a a good choice as well. So the other thing that's going to be hard to do is um the summer school model requires a certified teacher to be there um in order for the DPI to qualify it uh to be used for summer school. So that narrows down the the number of coaches that we can have do that, uh train in on that. They would train us, and then we would implement the 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 program through through our own coaches. Um and that's where I made the mistake. I thought they were going to come in and do that. Uh so that's going to be a challenge. I have two weeks during the summer that I have to be gone, and I don't know if we're going to be able to cover that. I haven't been able to find out anybody so far who who could do that. Um I'll keep looking. Um Charlie will be able to, I talked to him, and I've been in contact with him quite a bit. Uh his program is similar, but it'd be a straight fourteen hundred dollar fee. Um but he'd only be here one day a week. He'd train us in. Um he said um maybe like the afternoon of the third, after I get off work, and whoever else wants to get trained in on that. And then, or no, the Thursday and Friday, um after we get out, um maybe those afternoons. Anyway, um we can get trained in on that, and Charlie wants to start like that week right after school starts, and he wants to go from six-thirty or six to seven-thirty for one group, and then um seven-thirty to nine for the other. And then he can only be here Wednesdays, and he's got to head back to put into Point where his, you know, business is. And he's got groups over at Pacelli as well that he's running. I'm just trying to lay out everything. There's a lot of moving parts on this thing, and I know um I don't necessarily just because like, I mean, there should be a decision that is made by the whole kind of athletic system, but um it's hard to do, you know? So uh if we want to get it running by by summer, um a decision needs to be made um to do that. Like the days that um I won't be gone in July, you know, I'm certainly willing to be here to be trained in, and I hope we can get a couple other coaches trained in as well. Uh I think maybe some assistant coaches I can talk into training, but that's with the Charlie model. The other model, we need a, we need a teacher. Um but it's free, and it's and they're quite good, so um I know the question's going to be, you know, what do what do I think? I don't know. Do you want to play some of the stuff?
Yeah.
Let's uh play the uh the video from um Athletes University. So this is the guy who who did the mock.
Oh, it's okay, guys. Appreciate you guys taking the time with us. And I hear you guys have a couple of questions, so I just really want really quickly hammer those out to clear things up a bit. So a quick overview of what we're going to do this summer. So we consult and develop your coaches to train new athletes at Highland. So this is like professional development that's cool, will end up actually getting paid for. Um so we're going to survey, design, write a custom program for each group, high school boys, high school girls, middle school boys, middle school girls, and then onboard video train, post one-on-one calls for your coaches to set them up to train, not only for this summer, but things they can use for any single school year next year, all right? And really being not about these next eight weeks or summer, but about the next eight years and training work coaches to coach. So not us just coming in and teaching your athletes for the summer, but actually putting systems and strategies in place so that you guys can have success over the next whatever ten to twenty years. Uh and then also on top of that, what we'll do, host a parent and athlete intro Zoom meeting to signups, and then retract no signups as well, so you guys don't have to worry about anything to do with that. Um let's offer a protein program, a t-shirt, that's optional, often they can do at the side. A lot of kids and a lot of families have liked that in the past, so they ended up approaching it and right then and there, having that workout. We've seen awesome success with that. And then obviously throughout the summer, we're going to be there for your coaches, bi-weekly check-in calls, answer any questions, um making sure that the strategy is getting carried out. Then when, so typically, we're going to run these workouts for eight weeks during summer, so after school gets out, and then before football starts, so eight weeks this summer would be June tenth to August second, and that's Monday, June tenth to Friday, August second, eight weeks. And then mornings usually work best because kids have jobs and things like that. Could offer things in the afternoon as well, but what we what we typically do is high school is at six AM, middle school is at eight AM, following high schoolers, and then boys will go Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then girls will go Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So everyone will be all together on Fridays, the whole high school, the whole middle school. Um typically for these smaller schools, it's not really an issue, and some kids have camps and vacations and everything's going on on weekends anyway. Okay, the fun part, how? Okay, so running it through summer school, just meaning that any certifying teacher has to be there for the count towards minutes on when you're FTE stuff, so I'm going to get into the estimate now. So break even number, I know you guys were looking for it, asking for it. So I ran some numbers quick, and just being transparent here, our cost, two-nine-hundred, then if you just had one coach there for the entire summer, um twenty-five bucks an hour, hundred-and-fifty hours, uh twenty hours a week for eight weeks, that's hundred-and-fifty hours, so twenty-five bucks, four grand for one coach to be there the whole time. Okay, so that coming out to nine-nine-hundred total cost, meaning you would just need thirty-four signups. So if you come over here, you can play around with the numbers, I'll share this with you guys too. But there, that's going to be thirty-four signups, that covers the cost of the nine-nine-hundred there, that's your break even. And obviously, thirty-four signups, not hard to get. I can almost guarantee that we would get that, just looking at these other schools, right? Hundred-and-thirty-nine signups, so over, that's a hundred and five more signups than what you guys have to get. This is obviously a little bit bigger school, but in this moment here, eighty-seven, they had fifty-eight. Last summer this year, they're in the sixties pretty easily, and then I have a pretty small school, they had sixty-nine signups. So not be worried about getting this out, I can virtually guarantee it. And then getting into, so if you wanted to have a certified teacher there, and then you wanted to have one coach there too, so someone that can float around, so one person is always there to make sure that it's getting counted towards a certified teacher. So if that's Mike, in your case, Mike could be there all the time, making sure you're there for the count towards the motion. But then you have your coaches from sports teams that want to come in and actually train and run the workouts. We train those coaches, and then they come in and run the workouts, and they wouldn't have to be a certified teacher, because Mike is already there. So that's what we're talking about here. You only need thirty-four signups to have one onsite coach. If you wanted to have two onsite coaches there all the time, that's back there, another four grand. Obviously, this is going to split among how many of your coaches you want. So if Jordan's one among, if you have volleyball coach, softball coach, I want to come in and do the girls' days, that's totally free to do. Um so if you figure four grand for each of them, then your total cost comes up at thirteen-nine, the second coach there, and then you'd be forty-seven signups. So you can obviously play with these numbers again. Forty-seven signups, fourteen thousand covers a thirteen-nine, so as you can see, not hard to get this break even number. Um this has worked, like I said, really, really well with schools that we've worked with, gone into some school. And like I said at the very start, right, this is professional development for your coaches. So some of you might send your teachers out, your administration out for some PD throughout the school year, pay to go do that stuff. This is PD for your coaches for free, and the school actually profits from it in the end, so really cool concept. Um I think you guys are crushed with this model. Uh so like I said here, you can kind of get this up however you want, so one certified teacher there all the time, one float coach, however it might be. And then there's no limit on how many coaches you can train, so if you want Mike there, if you want Jordan there, if you want softball, volleyball, basketball coach, everyone there to get trained, we'll train everyone, it's no problem with that. Um and then we'll give you our attendance tracking system for DPI, make it really easy. And then obviously the progress tracking system, um okay, then week one versus week eight, and then we'll be able to test those same things. It's easy in the winter, and obviously to make sure that you guys keep on climbing that ladder, right?
Thank you. So as Mike and I talked, really, what what initially, we thought the difference maker was that they were going to be onsite. We've we've learned that that's not the case. So the reality is that we could purchase the Pacelli person, fourteen hundred bucks, I think is his fee. Booster Club has already said, hey, we'll put fourteen hundred dollars, so it's zero cost for the district. He comes out every Wednesday for six weeks, and as I um had up here, the example plan would be that plan. So, you know, day one, day two, and day three are Monday, Wednesday, Friday approach, and then that's weeks one to two, here's weeks three to four, and then here's weeks three to five. He's here on Wednesday, the way I understand it. Um and then somebody else has to be there Monday, Friday, and the kids come in, and it would probably be the same times. Now, this is not assuming that summer school approach, so we would not necessarily need to have a certified teacher there, just somebody that'd be present to open up the weight room. But then there's no state reimbursement, but then again, the cost is covered by the Booster Club, and it's and it's less. What you don't have is you don't have the training of our coaches or our staff who then can carry it forward the next year, the next year, the next year.
Okay, well, Charlie, so I contacted him, and I said, well, would you be willing to do this? Maybe it's because we have to have somebody in chief. He said yes.
Okay.
So Charlie will train our coaches. Probably not to the, you know, probably not as much, I'm not sure, right, I don't know, but he said he would.
How many of your coaches want training, though? Or how many of them are willing to be trained? You know?
All of the coaches would be.
Right, and so we just have to find that time that works for everybody. And like I said, Charlie was talking about, you know, that Thursday and Friday, maybe after school. That he wants to start that next week after school's out, get that training in, which whatever works. I don't know how long the training takes, um but uh he said he'd, you know, he'd be able to do that. I just talked to him, just talking to him. Um so I guess um both programs have benefits, it's just that uh it's a little harder to uh manage the uh the onsite uh teacher licensure if somebody can't show.
Do you know what two weeks you made it for?
Yeah, to be right in the, right in the, like, right after the fourth, up until the next two weeks.
Only July is until now, so I end through the twelfth, the fifteenth to the nineteenth.
And again, I, this is just my my perception. Um I have not talked to Mike about this, but um listening to comments at the at the football discussion, if there's a way to to have somebody that's exciting or something that's exciting, coming in and lifting weights is not necessarily awesome, right? Um I reflect that in my high school experience, and we had a, we had just gotten a brand-new Nautilus equipment, and this was, this was eighties, so obviously it was a different time. But our coach had made a cassette tape on loop, and it was just him counting, and he'd say, switch. And he's like, ready, you move to the next station, you just keep going, and that's what he did. And I don't think he was even in the room. But there was no free weights, it was all Nautilus, and that was the best thing, and bands, whatever. So it was, it was, it was way different. Um it wasn't exciting, and then the only reason we did it is because there was incentive um for us to do that. Nowadays, it's almost, it it's like, if there's not, if there's not a a connection for the student, if there's not something that is is exciting or or got a wow factor to it, it's almost like, yeah, hold on. I don't know if they'll, they'll, they'll come. And that was the conversation kind of at the meeting, like, how do we, how do we encourage kids to do this? Could we do it during study halls during the the course of the day? Could we have somebody come in and and present and and really kick it off and say, hey, I'm going to be your personal trainer and online, and we'll connect and develop that relationship? Because um the fact remains that all then, all student athletes could benefit from becoming, you know, stronger and faster and more flexible and have more endurance. I mean, that's, that's just a good thing for all, you know? So if there's a way that we could train our coaches, there might be interest in doing that, um which will allow more people then to be able to not necessarily lift weights, but work out with kids to increase their flexibility and their their endurance. The question is, which way do we do it? The safe option is probably going with Pacelli, because there's a the zero-cost factor right now to try it. How many kids can we get? I don't know how exciting he is, but he's doing that job, and they like Steven's point, they enjoy him.
Shelley likes him.
Comes with high regard.
Yeah, kids who go to him like him.
A little bit more risk would be to go with the Athletics uh or Athletes University. And again, the break even with one coach there or one certified teacher there would be thirty-four students, and that's not incorporating the fourteen hundred, that's been earmarked from the Booster Club to go towards some training program. So you take the nine ninety-nine, and it goes down to eighty-five, then the break even is, I didn't, I didn't do the numbers, but you're talking twenty-eight now. You know, is that, and?
How many coaching, teacher coaches do we have?
So nine. Three.
Sam.
Sam.
Joey, I guess, third.
Oh, Joey.
Joey.
Hi. Hi.
So it's one long, ninety careers, like used to be.
You're picking up the middle school position?
I go with basketball, middle school basketball, I guess, another one.
So that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Colton, Colton would be eight, so.
Um I did call, he gave me, like, he showed you the different class, the different uh school districts that have him, have uh Athletes University. I I did talk to the superintendent of um Highland, which is a fairly small district, and uh they're, you know, they're going to run it again. Highland has probably half the number that we do, maybe, maybe a few more, maybe a hundred and five, I don't know. But uh the number of students that are doing the program for the second year uh is over fifty-five, which is pretty impressive for a small district like that. At this point, you know, I've been trying to um encourage uh people coming, the kids who come into the weight room, whether they see in the hallway, um you know, if they're interested in it. And uh at this point, we've got about twenty-five signups. I haven't really hit middle school very hard. You know, I I I think that we could hit, I think that we could hit the thirty-four break even, no problem. But, you know, like uh, we don't have any wow factor coming in then, you know, Charlie'd be a wow factor too.
And the other thing, I don't know about the admin team, if they'd agree with me, but if it's non-staff coach and, you know, if we said, hey, if you come to this training, could we, could we uh, you know, do PD or PL points for that? But uh so, yeah, not that, I mean, it directly relates to what you're doing with the kids. So in our compensation model, we um provide PL points for uh professional learning points, for book studies, and for other professional development opportunities. And then that ties into raises and or, uh, more approved and or stipends. Uh, so could we, could we incentivize that for our coaches and provide that? Yeah, maybe that would be some more coaches to say, ah, I'm interested, but I don't know. And then, hey, get PL points. Oh, sure, okay. That might help get more coaches there. Sure. Like, don't, don't think it'd hurt, you know? So regardless of which way to go, if, if Charlie's willing to, to train too, it just, um, this was kind of a unique model that, uh, athlete, Athletes U has presented, because they do have the summer school approach, which then, yes, it costs a little bit for the onsite teacher, and it costs something for, um, for their program. But then their model is that you get enough sign up, they develop the excitement, they are like, hey, this is gonna make you a better athlete and a better player, and then it comes back to and, and state funding from the, you know, increasing your pupil count by having more summer school students there, so. I think, my opinion is both options are, are fairly low risk. There's just more more associated buy-in when it comes to Athletes U upfront, but then again, if we have this, and even if we have a certified teacher there for six weeks, um, that's what our normal summer school is, six weeks.
The video said eight, though.
It's not eight, but Mike, if Mike did it, he may be able to do it for six, we'll see. So regardless, we'd be able to count those six, and then if, you know.
Well, we can log. Um, I heard him say, well, we'll send you the log. I'd have to have a different log, because I do the summer school recording for our, uh, for our DPI reimbursement.
Correct.
Um, so I would have a different log anyway that I would have a teacher of record, uh, get, make sure that we get that, the information I need versus the information that they might provide. Um,
But we have.
But we can make our summer school, like, like, or driver's, that is only two weeks. Band is different, like, we can make, doesn't all have to run at the same time, so we could count all eight weeks if we wanted.
If we have a certified teacher.
If we have a certified teacher there. And as far as finding a certified teacher, right, like, if it's a day that I'm working, I'm certified teacher, I can work in the. This travels.
Right.
I won't be as fun and exciting as maybe Mr. O.
Don't sell yourself short.
Very good, I could do it together.
I mean, my question is, of the, I mean, you guys said we have eight teachers that coach, right? I mean, of the eight of you guys, do you think you could come up with each a week, right? Theoretically, one week out of the year to help your own program? That's how I would look at it, as in say, okay, you guys want the, the kids to show up there, are you willing to put that one week over summer also into it too, to help your kids be there? They hold them accountable. And they say, hey, I'm gonna be there, right? You should be there.
And this model is, is incorporating payment for that teacher to be there.
Mm-hmm.
At the, at the, um, summer school age.
I guess that's my, that's what my question would be. I mean, I know you said you could be there for six to eight, but you know, that's great and all, but if everyone else is gonna benefit from it too, all the other programs, I personally would be like, okay, let's, let's all be a part of it, right? If it's gonna help your program out, I would, I would ask you to be there, or to want you to be there if at all possible.
Would you be concerned about the rhythm of the program though, Mike, with different teachers every week though? How it's run?
So if everybody's trained in on the same model, um, I'm not, no, I'm not concerned about that. I mean, I'm not like, uh, I just kinda just like undertook this. I, I really don't know. I really don't know what's gonna come out. I mean, it, you know, I mean, the, we need a program, right? That's what I know. And the kids want a program, because when it's brought up, right, that we could have, you know, a fitness program.
Do they know they have to get up at six o'clock in the morning? Because I've never known a teenager to get up at six o'clock.
Well, I've got it written out, and I've explained the whole thing, and, you know, um.
Oh, wait, I'm out at six o'clock? I didn't hear that.
Yeah, six o'clock in the morning.
A lot of the, a lot of the high school students have a job, so they, they have to be there at six o'clock in the morning, because the job starts at eight or seven thirty or whatever. So you gotta get your workout in before. So, I mean, the commitment is a commitment. I mean, if you want, you, if, if the athletes want the programs to be better, right, if you wanna win, if you wanna compete, you have to start long before the games ever start and commit to what's going to make you win, which is being in shape is a big one. And, you know, we talk about that as coaches all the time, and the kids are willing to do that, I think. Um, I can't guarantee anything, you know, I don't know. You know, but I have seen an uptick in, uh, the amount of people in the, in the weight room every day. Um, we're getting, you know, more people. And, um, you know, hopefully, um, they'd be, you know, build some sort of camaraderie uh, among the groups, uh, during the summer school. Um, because that's the way it's gonna be run. It's not gonna be individuals working out. It'll be a program where they're working um, together, right, and encouraging each other and competing against each other in the various, you know, um, activities that, uh, that these, you know, fitness coaches come up with. Um, that's one of the big things, is that there's the excitement because of the competition um, within, you know, their own groups.
And I would add to that, I, I think that also came up in our football meeting. There were, um, some comments about the lack of support of other sports teams. So when you go to a softball game, are the football players out there watching softball? No, they're not. When you go to a boys' basketball game, are the girls' basketball players there? Maybe if they're playing the same night, but there's not a lot of, um, it's, uh, it's perceived by some people that were at that meeting that there's, there's less support for each other, which this helps build that camaraderie amongst female and male athletes, male athletes of different sports, female athletes of different sports, because they're all there for the same goal, and that's to improve, to get stronger, to get more flexible, to get more explosive, to improve their physical capabilities. And it's from somebody that is not local, that is coming from the southern part of the state, that is somebody different, and Mike and I can go there, and not that we're completely not exciting, but there's probably other people that are more exciting than us, that can engage in a, in a, in a more dynamic way.
So I guess what we first have to do is decide if we're gonna do a trainer program. And then secondly, what are options gonna be? Which option are we gonna go, my, collecting that?
More.
Yes.
The third option would be if there's any other further clarifying questions that we need. If we know that we're going, and I hate to stack stuff up on a special important meeting, because that's terrible. But if we know that we're gonna have to schedule, or we're trying to schedule a negotiations board meeting, could we have one or two items? If there's questions, if there's more information, could we, could we also do that? Because that's still before June, we can still reach out, still communicate with those individuals to get locked in for the summer. Not that we wanna do that, but if there's information that we don't have in order to make a decision, that would be a way to, to back it off by one week, to get more information that the board needs or that you see you need, if you don't have a clear direction at this point in time.
That's what I would rather see done. I would rather see get some more information, as in, I would like to know how many of those coaches are willing to, to be a part of it, and also how many students that you could get to theoretically sign up to make sure to see that number. Like, you know, are we gonna?
Twenty-four now, right?
So if I may say one thing, um, it'd be great if I could come up to the kids and say, this is gonna happen, because I haven't been able to do that, right? So this is all but theoretical so far. As in, if we can make this happen, would you be willing to be, you know, and there's our twenty-four. If, if I was able to say, we're gonna have a program, and I don't have to tell them which one, because they don't know, you know? We're gonna have a program, and so let's start signing up. That's different than, we might get a program. You see what I'm saying? I'd, I'd like to be more like.
I don't know, we wouldn't choose a program, because the fourteen hundred dollar program, that's a lot.
That's an all-grader.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do, I can say we're gonna have a program, because I can't, I couldn't say that yet.
Right. I would say we're all grating, we wanna do something.
We're gonna do something, but I think a lot of it's gonna, for me, it will be depend on, A, how many kids you get to say yes or no, whether it's McKenna getting some volleyball players, you're getting some football, some basketball, I don't care, right? We need to know how many kids are gonna be there, because if eight kids say, hey, I'm gonna be there, and they say, and they show up there, that's great for those eight kids, but, you know, but if twenty-four say, hey, we're gonna be there, and eight show up, that's enough fun then, right? That makes no, no fun at all.
I have a question. If we choose the Pacelli guy to come, is that still gonna be like, is volleyball gonna be involved in that? Or is that strictly a football program?
No, that's, he, he, he coaches everybody.
Okay.
That's his, yeah, he's got his own business, he's, he's a trainer, he, you know, he does Pacelli, he does all Pacelli, you know?
Some of our kids do now.
Yeah, he does a summer program, right? So a lot of people would point go to him. Uh, and so that's why he can't give us any more than a day a week. But, um,
And the other, the other thing I can do is that, if there's consensus without an actual action item to say, yes, we wanna do something, I think we have that. So I think, I think coaches can go to their athletes and say, hey, there's gonna be a summer program to get stronger, more flexible, and more endurance, it's gonna help you, and regardless of what sport, both of them, to my understanding, kind of tailor it to the individual. It's not just, oh, here's a football workout, everybody's gonna do the football workout, because that doesn't apply to a volleyball kid, it doesn't apply to a basketball or softball track or whatever it might be. So having said that, um, I think we, we can say, yes, we're going to have a program. Um, between now and, and whatever the special board meeting is, I'll hold a, a, a coaches meeting to see, I'm, for staff coaches, staff coaches to see who is interested in learning. If there's, explain the both programs, to see if there's a coach's perspective on which way they wanna go. If there's, you know, if you vote that, yeah, Athletes U is, is something different, that's, that, that sounds best, or we know Charlie, we like him, let's, let's go with him. And then we come back to that special meeting, we can have maybe some more input from our, our, our teacher coaches or our staff coaches.
So, but I also think that you need to, if we're gonna have middle school, that parents need to know about it versus asking a middle schooler, because it's gonna be up to these parents to bring their kids in early in the morning, or, you know, or middle school can say, yeah, I'll, I'll come, no problem, and we get.
Knowing it's six A.M.
Yeah, and we know it's in the morning, so there's no way I'm not. Now, if it's the fourteen hundreds, there's no question that the student, the student, athletes, does it have to be an athlete? What if there's some kid that just wants?
It has to be an athlete at all. They, they just wanna come and.
Well, I know what we're saying.
There's a lot of attention to go to the weight room that aren't necessarily athletes, but they like lifting and all of that stuff too.
Because we keep saying the athletes. I think we need to know that it's available to, I mean, I mean, I have a trainer, so I mean, anybody can train.
And that's a good way to bring them into a sport then, you know, maybe a little bit of cohort. So the, the other thing, the other thing that could come into play, and I don't mean to muddy the waters, but should we have an I O L student attend summer school here, that opens up fund eighty, which is then a community fund, because now it's not just for Roshel kids. I don't know that we would open that, but if it's a Whittenberger, I, I don't know if we wanna do that. Um, but that is another layer of a question mark that we'd have to understand if, let's say that there was a somebody's cousin that, hey, he's staying with me for the summer, I'm gonna bring him. That's another layer of, of possibility.
Is that gonna take away from camaraderie of this though, saying it's us against them, they're, they're our competition, we don't want that.
But at the same time, maybe they might befriend everybody, he might come to our school then, walk away from their school. It's always a bright side.
Always, always the opposite.
It would be.
Someone suggested, if there's a fee, we cannot charge a fee for summer school. We charge, I, I'm just giving information. If we charge a fee for summer school, then we can't count those for reimbursement.
And those dollars.
If we choose that option. Yes. And out of school, out of district employment, uh, does not count for reimbursable summer school minutes. So, for example, we have open enrolled students in our, um, in our school, summer school, their minutes don't count
Right.
for us because of the laws of summer school enrollment.
I think this first year, we should just keep it within.
Right. I just wanted to share, because it was a topic that actually came up.
Keep it within, and then if it goes, then we can add other people.
Would, would Mr. Woda do it a second day if it was twenty-eight hundred dollars instead of fourteen hundred?
I don't know.
Right?
I, I.
I'm asking, because.
I, you know, I've, I've emailed with him, as, as we the last three or four days, five days, uh, trying to figure out, you know, I, I don't know, he's pretty busy. I don't know. You know, he's got his business, he's got clients and and things, so. I'm sure.
And would, would it have to be mornings, right? I guess, you know, a question would be, could there be an afternoon or evening for that to happen? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if.
You know, but then the problem would be if you're here, right, if you're a teacher, you have summer school during the morning. So you wanna be here during the morning, you don't wanna come here later.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
I would say, look, you wanna get done with, get out of the way, look at some day, you know?
Because then you can plan for your afternoon, oh my gosh, I have to be here all the time, at least you plan in the morning, right, and you know it's done, like Keith said.
Generally speaking, the guys like to work out, at least, you know, last year, they did, they wanted to work out, for football, they wanted to work out in the morning, mostly. Uh, before, um, work. Um, but some did work out after they came home.
My experience would say that that's exactly right. Get it over and done with, get up in the morning, it's cool, it's not a hundred and eighty degrees outside and seven hundred percent humidity, because it can get kind of stuffy in there, so you get up, get it done, and I got the rest of your day to do whatever. Um, just overall, just patiently, places I've been has been better in the morning.
That's certainly, um, something that we can talk about. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if Charlie even does it, you know, in the afternoon.
But I would ask a question if he's willing to, you know, if we.
Is there any way that we can get to it?
Right? I mean.
I have middle school for two more weeks too, so I can even make up something that we're gonna have this program. Would you be interested? Yes or no? And if they want one, they can take it, check yes or no, bring it home, so we could get a rough number for middle school too.
Yeah, that would help, that would help. So I think what Dennis, you need to do, um, contact the teacher coaches. Ms. McKenna, if you do what you're doing, and then I just need a motion to say that we're going to have a summer school, um, training program, and then as far as the option, we'll table that and tell them that.
One more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Would it be wrong to say if, say we do Charlie's, right, and a couple of the coaches get trained, right? Would it be wrong for those coaches to run a second day then?
No, I think Charlie, that's what Charlie wants. If, if you read, if you read, like, the discussion that we had, um, he said that the whole idea is that, right, he develops, he helps develop the program, and then we take it, and, and, and we take it to next steps. I mean, that's what Charlie envisions, right? He's, you know, he really wants to see, you know, that the kids succeed. He's, he's very altruistic in that way, at least he appears that way.
You want it to be good, but not quite as good as Pacelli. That's how I read that.
I know, they're gonna give you the B workout, Pacelli can see A work. But, um, right, he makes it very clear that, um, right, this is all about developing our program to meet the needs of our, our, you know, our students and athletes and, and our programs. So, yeah, I feel he's, you know.
Do I have a motion to, um, approve a summer training program?
I will make the motion.
Chris, okay?
I'll second it.
Second it, okay. All those in favor of approving a summer training program, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay? And then as far as the option goes, we, we'll table that or work on that for later. So you can tell people.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Two thousand twenty-three public, a pupil dance discrimination report.
So every five years, this year's been a seven year because of COVID, Uh, basically, we have to go through a self-evaluation report about non-discrimination, so, We have a, a number of, uh, meetings throughout the year, and I Review a bunch of policies, we, um, we have a criteria here, and it talks about cycle four, cycle five, so, I think the last person that did this was Heath Nowitzki, Because he was going for his admin degree, and they said, here, we're gonna delegate this to you. So I took basically the template that I found, uh, for the work that was done In the twenty sixteen seventeen school year, And then updated, and as we say here, in cycle six, um, of this, of this process, In twenty twenty-one is postponed until now, um, in twenty twenty-four, to look and review In, in years back, so it's, uh, administrative real P I, um, nine point zero six, Going through the template, these are the people that have been, um, involved in it here this year, Uh, myself and Chad, and Mary, and Steve, and Cole, and Jillian, and Andy, um, and we've Provided comments and, and have gone through all of the different policies to make sure that we have, You know, if there's harassment, do we have somebody assigned to be the harassment coordinator, if there's A bullying, you know, take a look at that, take a look at things such as our, um, scholarships, and is that equitable? Is that, you know, why is there so many, and frankly, this is a result of our data, Why is there so many females that are receiving All the, uh, scholarships and not as many males? Well, checking with our front office and checking with our policy and checking with our counselors, that's because If you take a look at our GPA, the females score higher in our GPA, and you take a look at who actually completes and fills out the scholarships, More females take and, take the time to do that, and less males do, so By percentage, more females get scholarships than boys, it's not necessarily that we're favoring Female students, but they're the ones taking the time to fill out All those scholarships, so it, it's, it's a no brainer that they're going to be, uh, receiving more of them, so That's a process that we've gone through, um, I, I'm not gonna dwell on everything that's in this report unless The board has specific questions, because, again, we review policy, we review the sports, we review attendance, we review, um, Scholarships, we have reviewed a number, do we review technology? Um, you know, are we equitable in technology because we're one to one, yes, everybody gets the same thing, it's not like we say, okay, You know, all the fourth grade boys get access to technology and nobody else does, you know, we don't, we don't have policies like that, so Um, open any questions, otherwise I would ask that, Again, this is a self-review, basically, I have to sign a, a, a waiver, an assurance form with D P I saying that we've gone through the process, And then if D P I ever says, wait a second, we want to see your plan, Then I share this plan with them, but it's on request only, it's not something that we have to submit. I'll make the motion.
Okay, James, there's a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor of accepting the two thousand twenty-three public man discrimination Report, pupil, sorry, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. Okay, consider open enrollments for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Next up, we have, um, and this is, so last year, Um, during the open enrollment period and during the non, I'm sorry, the official open enrollment period and during the non-official open enrollment period, We brought open enrollments in on a monthly basis, we said, this year, let's go ahead, And with, with Tricia's assistance, we were able to, um, just wait until the open enrollment period is done, And then bring them all to the board at the same time, so we take a look at the outs, Uh, we try to, uh, try to put together this, um, spreadsheet where it doesn't mention Um, any names or anything, because the names are not really important, but it's a matter of People that are open and rolling out, People might have five oh fours, they might have I E Ps, but they're going Out for different reasons. We also have the ins, and if you take a look, You know, we start this at the same thing, start on line four, go to through sixteen, So we got ins, we start on line three and go to fifteen, so we have the same amount ins As we do outs, so we're even for this year only. Uh, this isn't the total, because it's not something you have to reapply every single year, But for this upcoming year, we have the same amount of requests in versus the same, uh, same amount of requests out. However, when we take a look at the ins, the ones that, um, are highlighted over here, We do have three requests to come into the district that have an I E P. As we should remember, back in January, we set the limits to, say, no open enrollments for special education, Um, unless it was speech language only, because there were Some openings for speech language, and the caveat that if we would ever Be able to replace, uh, Mr. Markworth at the high school and have two Special teachers at the high school, that would potentially open up some avail, availability for high school Special ed, open enrollment ends, and you notice that These open enrollments, we have, we have seven, we have nine, and we have twelve. So, if over the summer We were able to hire a person for that, uh, Mr. Markworth's position that's been vacant all, uh, all of this year, The potential to grant the requests of that ninth grader and that twelfth grader may become available. We'd review that after third Friday count to verify there's been no actual move-ins Of special ed students, but we'd also, you know, there's a possibility that a family with a special ed student at a high school level May move out of the district, and they might move to Madison, we don't know. And so after third Friday, we would take a look at that, and if there were any spots that would be made available, We reach out to see if they're still interested in, in coming to our district, And then if we don't have enough spots for all of them, then we do a random draw. So, the recommendation is to approve the open enrollments out and the open enrollments in in two separate motions, Um, but with the open enrollments in to, uh, deny those with an I E P Unless there would be staffing changes or open openings after third Friday count in the fall.
One of the students that has an I E P is already attending Rochelle.
Is that the seventh or the ninth? The seventh?
So they were also a first grader counted in, coming into second grade, that The current student. And our Our past practice and precedent has been that if One of our students has moved out of our district, But has been our student, that we Continue with them because they are our student, they're already counted in our numbers, they're already Kid we service.
Correct, so This happened this past year, where we had a currently, a resident student with an I E P move out of district In a mid-year move, and we reached out to Jen Danrow, the, the, uh, D P I open enrollment coordinator, and
They didn't have to apply for this year, what they would have to, they would have to apply for this year.
Right, because we've, and So, I'm trying to remember the conversation, because We, we did it incorrectly, and by being, what I mean by incorrectly is that they should have applied for open enrollment right away Uh, at that time, and we didn't, we allowed, we said, oh, they're our current student, why wouldn't we, we'll have them apply next year. So, and then I asked about tuition waivers, she said, no, you really don't do a tuition waiver, But it should have been open enrollment right away, uh, outside of the normal, the normal, uh, Open enrollment period. But if they're attending, and, and this was multiple phone calls with our special ed director as well, If they're currently our student, they're already calculated in our numbers, Why would we disallow them because they're already part of that special ed count? And so therefore, um, we would accept the enrollment if they're currently attending, Because they're already calculated in the numbers that we were calculating, especially when they're going from a resident student, and then they move out. So that, you're saying that's the seventh grader on this, on this Sheet. And is that that same student that moved out mid-year? Okay. So that student Was a special ed student, resident student, moved out of the district, maintained Their enrollment, And now are seeking to maintain that enrollment for next year. According to D P I, that is plausible, and so I stand corrected, that would be Denying the two new requests to open up, uh, open enrollment into the district And to approve the one that's currently Here. Thank you.
Okay. So we need two motions, one to accept the Open enrollments for those going out.
I'll make that.
Yeah, I'll show second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right, now I need one for consider open enrollments for those coming into the district Unless it changes after the third September, I mean, third September, I should say, I missed, okay, there.
Or, I would back if they changes.
Oh, we get another teacher. Okay.
I would, I would argue that the motion should, should be stated, um, to make a motion to Approve the open enrollments into the district Except for the two new requests of I E P students. Thus, Deny those two students.
Okay. So who would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
James, okay. And I will second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right. E four E plan and presentation.
So this is the information that Jillian presented earlier, we're just seeking official, um, consideration and approval of the plan.
Oh, okay, that, that's on. So I need a motion. I will make a motion to accept the E four E plan and presentation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor of accepting the E four E plan and presentation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right, consider Hockey co-op parent request.
So as they presented, they also, um, sent an email, and it says, just wanted to reach out on behalf of this, uh, their Cost is sixteen twenty-eight fifty, um, from their, what they've gathered from other parents and from talking with Pacelli, Pacelli, Wisconsin Rapids assumption, Are, uh, covering the entire cost of their players that attend this co-op, And hers contributes five hundred dollars per player, uh, from their district. Having been a co-op hockey parent in the Wausau area, Um, up there was a, a little bit different, I think there was probably, uh, more numbers, but ice time's not cheap. In that scenario, each of the six co-ops, uh, schools actually paid A base rate of, I want to say it was five thousand, to get to thirty thousand, the entire cost Of that co-op per year was about seventy-three to seventy-five thousand, so that meant that the pairs, the, the parents fundraised The rest of that. Luckily for us as parents of the hockey co-op in that setting, We have the, um, State Park Speedway, where we ran all the concessions, we've got a proceed, a portion of the proceeds That went towards that, we held something called Storm Fest, which was, uh, a big Dinner, silent auction, raffle type of thing, where we made Quite a bit of money, so, um, there was a lot of fundraising that was done. Um, so it's not abnormal for co-ops to have parent contributions. My understanding is that, as they signed up for the co-op, there was Explanation to say, we don't cover anything, um, To which they're like, okay, we're still gonna do it, because as you heard, they, um, they, they appreciate the, the fact that we're in the co-op and Instead of having to make that choice to go to a different school. Arguably, I don't disagree with the request, I think it's, it's plausible, and, and we're the only ones that don't do it. Just a, a, a note to the board that if we, if the board decides that, yes, we want to contribute something towards them, That becomes precedent setting, uh, precedent setting, or it could become if the next request was that, we say, we did it for the last person, And now, that might become more and more, if we engage in more co-ops down the road. So, something to think about. Because we currently have another co-op, right, we do soccer? Don't we?
Yes.
So do we do anything for them? Because that's gonna be the next question that they're gonna ask. But you know what I mean?
Yeah, how many students are in that? They're gonna, they're gonna.
They're gonna, you know. And, isn't it? Isn't it, when they signed up, they come to the board, they ask us, hey, We are, we want to do a co-op, right? And the parents are flipping the bill for it? Totally, I think that was the approval when it came to us Initially. And I'm not saying I'm against it by any means, but I'm just Background. Yeah. Like, this is what we voted on, because this is what came to us At the time, so it's I give it and I understand, because.
I would like to know how many students do we have in the Rochelle schools that are involved in a co-op? Because that's what's gonna happen, if we do it for one, it's gonna be, so I want to know, is the cost gonna be Five hundred dollars, or are we gonna be talking We need five thousand dollars?
We do have students that are involved, but not necessarily Co-op, so we agree to when kids are involved in co-ops in other schools, but of course Across.
Yeah.
But don't we have to agree to that?
I'm just saying we have other kids that are involved in co-op, so.
That's what I mean, like, in overall, like, are we talking there's Two kids, or are there seven kids, or are there fifteen kids, where?
I would say maybe three at the most. Or maybe.
I know of three for sure.
Okay.
We need a dollar bomb right now. I mean, if we're gonna do this. I feel like we should give something About the whole thing, but.
I don't, they're not even asking for the I, I didn't get the impression they were asking for the whole thing.
They were just telling everybody else did, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I would say, let's do a hundred bucks more than Amers, we don't want them to beat us.
Well.
It's just.
And also, yeah.
What did you want us to call?
Amers, but, you know, here now, so.
I feel like we should give something too.
I do too, I.
I do too, but I, I, for me, I want to know how many kids are there. I want to know what the total cost is gonna be if this, if we're going to be I'm sorry, go ahead. Because once other parents find out about this, like Everybody's gonna come, so What are we gonna say, yes, you want it, you know, it can be others, I, for me, I'd like to know what the total cost is gonna be, so For me, I would want this table until I had a total number Dollar amount. Or like, in general, like, we can.
I think we probably just need to, we need more, how many people we have, Because we can set the amount of whatever we're gonna do, so if we say, we're gonna do five hundred for a co-op, You know, If they want it, I mean, it, I, some people may just say, I'm just happy that you're letting me go. Of that, you know.
I mean, isn't, in another way, look, there's a two, it's like Want to be someone, because we don't want to lose kids.
Right.
We don't want, want to put, you know, lots of seats in. Um, yeah, you're right, we, how many, how many we have? Um, but also the next thing is, do they fundraise at all, are you gonna fundraise and help this out at all, you know? Where, let's, let's meet here somewhat, so.
Yeah, do you fundraise, and will Matt whatever you fundraise? Is that a stupid question, I mean, you say, if you, if you come up with five hundred, we'll, we'll.
But what if they come up with a thousand?
We gotta realize it's too magic to an extent, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm just saying, that I think, I think we'd be better off just saying in months. And hockey's, hockey's a very expensive sport.
Yes, it is.
And I, and I don't And I don't know if we've, we've always approved a co-op, but I don't know if there's ever been What Matt said about, you know, you are responsible for it.
We've got, a couple, a couple people have come to us and said they are They are paying the bill.
Okay, but I guess.
They've never asked any one of us to, for, the board, for any kind of money towards it, they just assume that I'm gonna take my child to go to districted play, I'm gonna pay the bill, whatever it is.
They probably didn't know other schools were paying for it.
But is soccer way cheaper than hockey? I, that's what I've heard from everybody, is hockey is real expensive, I mean, so for, so for hockey, do they only have to pay Five hundred bucks or four hundred bucks, and I'm like, okay, well, that's not too bad. Or they have to pay more here?
Well, it says their total.
Sixteen something.
Sixty twenty-eight. To your first question, and is hockey more expensive, absolutely, there's ice time, And every time you go on the ice, you take a team in there for an hour and a half practice, that's gonna be fifteen hundred bucks, four hundred bucks, I should say, it's It's like four hundred bucks an hour, usually, so that, uh, practice for two hours, you're talking eight hundred dollars. Depending what rank now, I know that at the Rose knee rank, they charge like three hundred dollars an hour, so a lot of times people Like to go there because it's cheaper, but then there's the travel from the Wausau schools and wherever else, so, um, That's one of the reasons that if you have attended Badger State games, the ice skating competition is in Rose knee, because it's the cheapest ice in the Wausau area, um, That's part of it, right? So, yes, soccer, you have the field, that's right, you got a basement gas to blow it, paint the line to field, but it's not The same amount to keep the ice in the summertime or wintertime, all right? And arguably, Unlike football, where a lot of times the school is gonna provide the helmets and the gear, The parents are buying the skates, they're buying the, the helmets, they're buying the sticks, It's not a school-supported Function, that is a parent-supported function, Because they're still individualized. And a hockey stick, Three hundred fifty dollars is not, that's kind of a cheap one. Skates, you can get to the twelve, thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars. And then when you find out your daughter has two different sized feet, that's just great.
Shut up, you serious?
Yeah.
Or through socks.
Right, or through socks.
Did you want to say something, or? The only co-op that we are officially.
The only co-op that we are officially in is the hockey co-op. And there is one student in the official co-op that we are currently in.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We can resume our soccer affiliation co-op if we have someone interested, but we are currently not in a soccer co-op.
We ended it, right, this year?
It has, I don't know if we ended it this year.
Right, now we have seriously.
But we, the only co-op we are currently in is the hockey one with one student. But Mr. Larson is correct, we do have a, a student that is in a lacrosse co-op.
But it's a club.
It's in the club, not an official one with us.
So.
Have anybody in the soccer club.
So, you know, just to make it fair, if you talk about this, we can do like, we'll cover a third or we'll cover a half of the cost. You know, we get a third of this one, it would be like four eighty, call it five hundred, you know what I'm saying? You could go that route where we'll cover X amount across the board, this way it's fair to everybody. You know, where.
I would just say, if you're gonna do it, I would just send a note, if you're gonna do it. I would just say, hey, we're gonna do three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever, here it is, right? I don't care if it's whatever programs, here it is, that's.
That way it's easier to manage, because I hear.
James wants six hundred though, because.
Because otherwise, if they're.
I'll throw in there. And how do you verify?
Right.
You gotta tell you how much was it cost for Anderson and then you.
So do we want, what is everybody wanna do?
Yeah, so what do we wanna do? We, any, many of the motions they wanna put forward? Can we just vote on it or?
I'm gonna abstain from the vote, because I may be using this in the upcoming years, so.
Oh, if there's a co-op developed.
If there's a co-op developed and I.
And let's hope so, yeah.
So.
Okay, so do we wanna make a motion?
How about we do five fifty?
Well, we can do it, okay. Would you like to make a motion or?
One of them a little.
One dollar.
How do you guys feel about this? Five hundred and one dollars. Price is right.
Price is right, come on down.
We don't have a time. I'm gonna bet one dollar.
Okay, so.
How you feel, Chris? What, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, that five, six hundred. I'd say six hundred.
Okay, well, okay, you wanna make a motion, then we can vote on it.
I'll make a motion for six hundred dollars.
Okay, so Chris is making a motion to give the hockey co-op parents request six hundred dollars. Do I have a second? Okay, James. Okay, so the motion is that we will provide six hundred dollars to the hockey co-op parent request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
Okay, one is Matt, all those in favor, oh yeah, so then the motion is carried. So, okay, so Dennis, would you please let that family know?
I will.
Please, thank you.
Contact them tomorrow.
Okay, consider school calendar adjustment, I guess we're tabling it now.
Well, I'm gonna recommend that we table it, because, um, one of the things that has come through with, with the perception survey and the sick committee is to, um, time, right? Time to coordinate, time to, to collaborate, time to grade, time to, um, connect with special ed, time to have, um, specific individual student, um, discussions, teacher to teacher, and time to just frankly, develop our teachers and to have professional development. Due to Act Twenty and the, uh, science of reading, Stephen's point has come out with a new calendar, even though it was already approved and they've incorporated more, um, more professional development days, just to try to get that Act Twenty, uh, requirement in for the younger grades. And so it was proposed to us, uh, to the administrative team, could we also revisit our calendar? Because otherwise, we wait until next year to work in those days when we know it's a need now. It's come through our perception survey, our teachers are asking for time. Frankly, the administrators have been asking for time, we know we don't have enough time during the course of the year to, to, to conduct professional development like we'd like, nor do we have enough time to coordinate teacher to teacher and department to department. Um, unfortunately, with the end of school, some lost kids or behavior issues that we get called out for, administratively, we have not had a chance to sit down and develop that. And really what we're talking about and, and the most, uh, most prevalent, um, consensus was to.
Did you lose it? I don't think you.
We didn't lose a child, we always know where they are, they're just not where they're expected to be.
Where they're assigned.
I have got on the bus that wasn't supposed to.
Oh, that's happened, I've done that before, she.
Or a student, a student says, hey, I'm gonna go to the bathroom and I don't come back for a long, long time.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Then we get the teacher to call to say, hey, where's this, where's James? But we don't know where James is, well, let's go find James, boy. Yeah. So I stand corrected, thank you very much. Sorry to mislead you all.
Well, it sounded.
We've never lost one yet, okay.
But we know, we don't have time to do the things that we want. So the, the consensus approach would not necessarily alter the current calendar at all, because that's been set. For all intents and purposes, parents may have scheduled trips around our current calendar. But what we'd be looking at potentially doing is increasing our, our school day. If we, um, if we increased it from right now, you know, we start eight oh five, we get out at, at, uh, three twenty-one. If we started at, at eight and went to three thirty, we started at seven fifty-five and then went till three thirty. Taking a look at that, that, that number of minutes per day on a hundred and seventy-five calendar, uh, student contact days, that gives us enough days where we could add in a day off, one per month and have that average. So at least we had a professional development day every month. Now, some of them are already locked in, you know, the transitional day in, in January, that's a, get your grades done, get ready for second semester of high school. Uh, you know, get the grades done at the elementary and rework the room, uh, maybe, you know, seating charts or whatever else maybe at, at the elementary. We also have, uh, a couple of, of days that are already pre-planned and prescribed. Obviously, our end of the year, uh, professional development day is going to be for room cleanup and summer prep and, and all that stuff, so. Um, but if we could add in those other days for not only that coordination, but also that professional development, if that's what we're looking to do, we don't have that ready for the whole. That's why we're gonna recommend tabling that. However, if we can come to the table, uh, back to the board, um, in June, with a calendar that doesn't alter the days off or increase that calendar in the mid-June, easy button is like, oh, yeah, let's just add two weeks and take off days and that's not what we're doing, because that runs into summer school, that runs into the summer vacation and it runs to other things. So we're looking at how many minutes per day would it be, would it require to then, um, work those number of minutes, we could have some more time for our staff.
Okay. All right, consider adjourning into closed session. Board will go into closed session, executive set session pursuant to the Wisconsin State statute, sections nineteen eight, five, one C E for the purpose of discussing and compensation of public employees over which the school board exercises jurisdiction, employee contracts. Do you have a motion?
I'll motion.
Alyssa, okay, do you have a second? Okay, um, at seven fifty-nine, we are going to close session. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you everyone for coming, sorry it was a little bit longer.
And in between this transition, Tricia would like to grab a picture of the, of the board members. All right, I wore my birthday shirt. I'm sure, yes.